We didn't really. Five of them.
I learned.
Well, we have strategy.
Yeah.
It's pretty amazing.
So, it's one.
Oh! Thank you. It's one of the pieces.
Yeah.
I'm on most things. We had to do OJT to get me back. Oh, shut up. Where do we do the thing on? We'll do that again down here, though. Call the meeting in order. This is the Woodland Park City Council meeting for regular meeting for November the 7th, 2013. We'll take pro call.
Thank you. Mayor Turley.
Present.
Gary Bravetto.
Here.
Bob Carlson.
Here.
Carol Harvey.
Here.
Ken Matthews.
Here.
John Schaefer.
Here.
Eric Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
For the record, I'd like to add that we just completed two executive sessions that were concluded, and the participants in the executive sessions were, and I just want to get those on the record for here, myself.
Eric Smith.
Ah, Gary Bravetto.
Bob Carlson.
Carol Harvey.
Ken Matthews.
John Schaefer.
Aaron Smith.
David Butterey.
Cindy Morse.
Suzanne Leclair.
Brian Flair.
Cindy Keating.
Okay, and if any person who participated in the executive sessions believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I ask that you state your concerns now. Hearing none, we will move on with the regular agenda for tonight's meeting. I'm going to say a couple of words. I think I heard that Spence Swan did the sign that's down here. I'm really tickled to be back. It was, it'll be a month ago tomorrow that I had my motorcycle accident, and with all the hundreds of thousands of miles that I've ridden and great good times, it's amazing that you can have an accident that really shouldn't happen, but I guess that's the reason there are accidents. But I will say that it was pretty touch and go for a while. I will also add that this community, I'll try not to get a little teary-eyed, but this community is a wonderful place, and the prayers and thoughts of people in this community from, and you couldn't possibly name everybody, from the churches, the community, the city staff, the county, just the citizens in general. I didn't bring them tonight, but the number of cards that I got from the elementary schools, the middle school, probably about 20 to 25 of my baseball boys from the high school came and visited numerous times. A great hospital out here that I was brought to first and did everything that they could and finally found that the surgery that I needed, there was only one surgeon in all of Colorado Springs that could do it, and there's only one in Denver that could do it, and the man that I went to, Dr. David Hamilton in Colorado Springs, he's a miracle worker when you consider where I was three weeks ago, and it would have been an entirely different life, I will guarantee you this, that I would not be here without that surgery. So, it's a blessing. I'm well on my way to recovery and really glad to be back and glad to be a part of this community, and I appreciate everybody, and so I'm tickled to be here. With that, we'll move on to ceremonies, presentations, and appointments, and for the first one, we're going to turn to Chief Larson.
I might as well tell you a little bit about this, and then we'll present the award. In December 2012, the Suffolk County Constabulary from the United Kingdom asked Woodland Park Police Department to assist in the investigation of a cold theft report of about 1.2 million pounds from an armored car by one of the guards in the car. He disappeared right after the theft, and the police in Suffolk County developed a lead that he might have been in our area. Officer Tezak was given the job of working with him. She followed up on leads and was able to establish that he bought a house with cash from a Swiss bank account just outside of Woodland Park. Based on that information and some other things that were developed, they had enough to induce him to make a confession in Crown Court in London, and that happened this spring. So, there were two detectives from Suffolk Constabulary working with her, and it was a really good investigation, well done.
An international investigation.
1.2 million pounds is the...
Wow!
That's a lot of money.
(laughing).
So, Officer Tezak, would you come up, please? The word itself says, "Awarded in recognition and appreciation for the great deal of assistance and support given to Operation Ramble, investigation into a theft of 1.2 million pounds from a Securic poor van by Edward Mara in 1993 in Flex Town, Suffolk County, England."
Very nice. Good job. That's great. You never know where these things are going to take you sometimes, do you, Bob? So, again, congratulations. Good work. We have a great police force here. Moving on to item five, additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda, and Cindy, we have something?
We do. Let's just take it, when we get to Agenda Item 9A, just for the viewing audience, and in case any of you are here and do not know, Sally will be asking that this be tabled at the request of the applicant to January 16th. As we get to item unfinished business, you'll see that there is a new agenda on your table, and we have added Agenda Item 7B, and that's to discuss the Memorial Park Master Plan Work Session. And then, when we get to Agenda Item 8B, we will also be considering Agenda Items 10, B, and C, all related to the building department, building fees, and the memorandum of understanding with the regional government. And that's what we have.
Okay, thank you. And consent calendar, Cindy?
Yes, just the one item, and that's the approval of the minutes of your last meeting, October 17th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second. Any discussion, changes? We'll take a vote.
Get my little sheet out here. Okay. Carlson.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Turley.
Yes.
Bravetto.
See.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And we'll move on to Item 7A, unfinished business, and that's the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Woodland Park and the RE2 School District regarding school resource officers, and for that, I'm going to turn to our City Manager, David Butterey.
Thank you, Mayor. At our recent budget discussions, we talked about the opportunity of bringing on a police officer with the intent of making that police officer's primary responsibility as a school resource officer. This would give us two SROs within the school system, both public and private. Council requested that we create an intergovernmental agreement, and Council also requested that we do some research on some statistics and data as it related to the numbers of times that SROs had been called out of the school. I provided that information to Council as a read-ahead packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and if I'm not able to answer those, certainly Chief Larson will do his best. But the IGA was included in your packet as well. It is, as we discussed, that we would fully fund that position with the exception of the capital expenses in year 2014, and then there would be a sliding scale for the next few years, so that ultimately, the second SRO would be 20% funded by the city and 80% funded by the school, with the first SRO, of course, being fully funded by the city. The IGA also has some other verbiage as it relates to should things change or things like that. So, it's been presented to you, the school district has agreed to this, they just recently elected new school board members, they don't have a chair yet of the school board, that will happen at their next meeting, and certainly, this IGA would not go into effect if you sign it until they sign it. So, I'm prepared to answer any questions that you may have. It is staff's recommendation that we do enter into this agreement with the Woodland Park School District RE2 for this additional school resource officer. What questions may I answer?
Any questions, additional questions for David?
Having a second office will dramatically increase the amount of coverage that we have. I understand right now, based on the figures you showed me, they're gone about one-third of the time, pulled away, up to at least one-third of the school year. So, having that second officer there would dramatically cut that.
Make a big difference.
So, it'll make a big difference. The only thing I would add is that I personally would like to see us fund the full thing, so we can hire another teacher with the money that they would be, you know, putting forth to hire about 80% for instance today. I would like to see us go in that direction eventually.
And I was not here for the previous discussion, but I did follow that and was very supportive of this. I think it probably came up in the discussion that, you know, we'd had a meeting with the chief and David and the school superintendent back in, I don't know, February timeframe.
February was correct.
To talk about this is a possibility, because I know I felt much better with it. Any other questions for David? Yes, Bob?
Yeah. The email you sent with the times that were called away, you did indicate, for instance, that annual leave would be taken during the summer. So, is that basically the same thing with all the others, is that for the training days, they can't be done during the summer, they've got to be done throughout the year, and so those reflect time called away during the school year?
The statistics that the chief created and I provided to you absolutely reflect those days away during the school year, when the kids are in class, I should say, because our officers can take days off when the school's not in session.
Right.
But as a general rule, those, that position doesn't take vacation until it's the summertime. That's correct.
Yes. My other question is on the estimate for the 60,000 at the very back of our budget book that does show the various levels of pay that ban, so to speak, and I noticed, like, Police Officer One is, you know, starts at like 37,000 or something like, 38,000, and if a 22% overhead was applied to that for FICA, et cetera, that would be more closer to 35, 45, 46,000 as opposed to 60,000. Was, how did you pick the 60,000 as opposed to like the lower number I just come up with?
Historically, our SROs have been more experienced police officers. They've either been a Police Officer Two, or a Master Patrol Officer, or a Corporal, and in some cases, a Sergeant. So, we typically do not ask someone to come into an SRO position as a brand-new police officer, so that's why we chose a bit of a higher pay scale. We think that's more consistent with what would really happen.
Okay. Carol?
Maybe I'm just missing it, in the IGA, we talk about fully funding operational costs of one SRO and a second SRO. Is there a way to distinguish that the first SRO is the existing SRO and the second would be the new hire? Is there maybe differences in salary?
The, true. In the year 2014, under city responsibility, I do define two SROs, one existing, one new, so I do flesh that out in that paragraph, but then later on, I do refer to as one and then the second. We can make that language change, that's easy.
I think we should, for clarity.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yes, Eric.
And now, this is something the school board will actually vote on and adopt, or not?
That is correct.
So...
And do recall that, based on our earlier discussions and what I perceive to be your intent, this money was included in the 2014 budget, so this is not an addition to the discussion we'll have later this evening.
And I'd like to make a motion that we approve the IGA between the City of Woodland Park and the Woodland Park School District RE2 concerning school resource officers as presented with one modification, as Carol indicated, that the second SRO is identified here is in fact the new one.
Second.
Motion a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we will take a vote. Cindy, please.
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Very good. Thanks, Council. I think that's wise on our part, and I think that's be very good for our kids. Moving on to Item 7B, let's have some discussion of the Memorial Park Master Plan, and for that, I'm going to turn to David Butterey again.
Thanks, Mayor. Council will recall that our October meeting, Land Patterns Inc. presented two proposals for the Memorial Park Master Plan. There was some good discussion. Very soon after that second meeting, I sent you an email and suggested that you have an opportunity to review the master plan between that date and this evening's meeting, and that at this evening's meeting, we would query you to see if you had a desire to have a work session with perhaps the Park and Rec Advisory Board, perhaps with Land Patterns Inc., perhaps with the staff, or all three, to further have a better understanding of the two options associated with that. If you choose not to do a work session, then I would be coming back to you for a decision on the option at the November 21st meeting. I would want that to be advertised, so people could come and speak on that if they wanted to. If you do desire a work session, then we will get that scheduled as we can and do that. So, Mayor, what I would be looking for is a decision from the Council this evening on whether or not to have a work session as it relates to the two master plan options.
Thoughts of Council?
I was the council member who suggested a work session only because I'd not read the final plan. I've read the final plan. I have no need for a work session, so I'd be willing to consider or to recommend an option of that.
And I'm agreement with that also.
Same here. I agree.
Nice point.
I think that's the guidance.
It is. Okay, then what I'll be doing is at the November 21st meeting, I'll be asking you to try to reach a conclusion on which option to adopt. Thank you very much.
Is this plan, is this linked on our website?
No, it's just a draft. It's right now.
Okay.
Until we get approval, but we don't have it on our website. It's a large file, I can put it in.
Yeah, the plans themselves, just the drawings, without necessarily all the budget things, maybe we could do that.
Yeah, they were on there, and then we took them out.
Yeah, but in preparation for the next meeting, maybe the public could go and take a look at the two concepts, and I will just make a comment tonight. I think the input, the way this was all worked and the input from the community was really very good, and the large number of people that was touched, and I'm very excited about what I've seen here. Look forward to it.
Thank you.
I could just say that I do have the large renderings in the Park and Rec Office as well, so if you have any community members that want to see the large renderings, they can come there and see them.
Okay.
Okay?
And also, I was remiss, Mayor, we did have, one of the things you council members asked about was, did the Park and Rec Advisory Board have a recommendation, and Cindy is passing that out to you now.
Okay, so this is the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board's statement regarding this, and so this is an official part of the record that we will consider.
Correct.
For our next meeting.
Correct. Thank you.
Item number 8A is an ordinance on initial posting, and that's to consider ordinance number 1197, initial posting for conditional use permit and site plan review to construct a 22,141 square foot farm and ranch supply retail store. And I won't go into the rest of specifics here, but for this, I am going to turn to Lisa Parnell, who's going to go through this with us for, again, initial posting.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself for this item since my engineering firm has worked on this project.
Okay. We'll come and get you. Thanks, Eric.
Good evening, Mayor. It's good to see you back up there.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Council. Tonight, I'm here just to introduce a conditional use permit with site plan review. This is for our applicant, Ray Hicks of Hicks Netaker Companies, and this is to place a 22,141 square foot farm, ranch, garden, and lawn supplies retail structure at Lot 1 of the recently approved L. Clifford Edition filing number 2, and that is addressed 919 Spruce Haven Drive. And this particular conditional use permit has to do with placing that condition to review outside storage in relation to the farm, ranch, lawn, and garden retail store in a service commercial district. And this has been reviewed by Planning Commission on October 24th, and it was recommended approval six to zero. And so, it's been reviewed to all the relevant criteria, the 11 conditional use permit criteria as well as the service district criteria, and staff is recommending approval of the initial posting of ordinance 1197 and to set the public hearing for November 21st, 2013. And if you have any questions, I could answer those, but we really intended to go into detail at the public hearing.
Any, from the initial review, any questions for Lisa? Again, it is initial posting, and we will be going through it in detail at the public hearing at the meeting on November the 21st. Any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, consider ordinance 1197 initial posting.
I have a motion a second for approval of ordinance 1197 on initial posting for the conditional use permit and site plan review approval. Any further discussion by Council? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Thank you. Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Oh, he recused.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And, okay, Eric will be coming back in. He didn't get to be way very long. So, we'll move on to item number 8B, ordinance number 1198 on initial posting, and this has to do with amending Title 15 of the Municipal Code, and it has to do with building codes and the changes that we have going on there, and for that, I'm going to turn to our Director of Planning, Sally Riley.
Thank you, Mayor Turley. It is nice to see you back, council members. I am going to also move forward with this discussion, item 10C, the intergovernmental agreement, as well as 10B, the fees to establish the building department, and I will take the intergovernmental agreement topic first and then talk about the code and then the fees, so a little shift in the order. And I would first like to, though, introduce to you Henry Yankowski. He is our building official from Pike's Peak Regional Building Department, and then Todd Welsh is also here this evening, and he is the attorney for Pike's Peak Regional, and I'll let them just say a couple of words before we dive into the intergovernmental agreement, the code, and the fees.
Welcome, and good to see you again. I saw you the other night at the... Sally must have set that up for you.
It had to be taller.
But I thought the meeting the other night at the U-Pass Cultural Center where you all were there and answering questions from the interested parties in our communities, builders, and developers thing was very good, and so, welcome.
Well, thank you. We're very pleased to be here.
And again, just for the record, please state your name and address and your business.
Sure. Henry Yankowski, Pike's Peak Regional Building Department, 2880 International Circle, Colorado Springs, 80910, and I'm the building official for Pike's Peak Regional. I don't really have any prepared statement, just to say, we're thrilled to be here, to have gotten this far this fast. It's really a credit to all the work that your planning department did. We had some input on some of the codes and that, but she, Sally, and her group really were phenomenal to get to this point so fast.
And I'm Todd Welch, Regional Building Counsel for Pike's Peak Regional Building Department, 2880 International Circle, Colorado Springs, Colorado, 80910. And the only reason I'm here is just to, if there's any questions about the IGA, I've worked a little bit with Erin, it's nice to meet her, and Sally's been great help, so I'm just here to try to answer any questions that might be from a legal standpoint. So, thank you for allowing us to be here and to work with Woodland Park.
Thank you. So, we'll just briefly describe the intergovernmental agreement that you will be entering into. It outlines the responsibilities of the building department, which is basically providing us with all the plan review, the inspections, and related building services. Regional is going to provide us with two inspectors, one that will be on-site daily for four hours each day. So, John Dickey and Blake Nunley have already started this week. John is going to be here on Monday, Wednesday, Friday mornings from 8:00 to noon, and then Blake Nunley will be here on Tuesday and Thursday afternoons. So, we will have a strong presence of these two inspectors, well-experienced inspectors, here in the office, and we have an office set up for them, so they'll be able to work out of City Hall. They are also providing the support for a halftime permit technician that is our employee, the city's employee, but will be paid through the fees that are collected for building permits and plan reviews. For that support, RBD will be receiving 100% of the fees collected for the various activities, and we'll be talking more about the fees in a moment. Next is Woodland Park's responsibility. We will be establishing a Board of Appeals and a process associated for that. We will be collecting the fees as we issue permits, and we will honor the contractors' licenses that are issued through Regional Building Department as well as Teller County Building Department, and this is something that Regional is doing special for Woodland Park, that they honor both the Teller County licenses as well as the contractor licenses for Regional. The term of this agreement is for five years, and there is, however, a 90-day out clause by either party. What questions may we answer?
Council questions? Yes, Eric. Yes, Eric.
Just one question, and I think four hours a day is probably a lot to bounce around, but if we have a peak with building season or whatever, and that's not enough, how would you address that?
It'll be either longer or more people.
All right. Can't argue with that.
And one of the things that I heard from the discussions the other night, and so I'll just go ahead and throw it in as part of the discussion, was, you know, what I really like with your company is that these individuals who are here, the amount of reach they have to all the different experts and inspectors and everything within your company, not to think that these are just the guys that do things, but actually, it's that team effort. That's what I understood, and really impressed me with the amount of reach you have within the number of people that you have working these kinds of things.
That is correct. There are electrical engineers, well, electrical engineer, I should say, a couple of structural engineers, architect, and a lot of mechanical and plumbing and building expertise, so you are correct.
And a lot of things, I guess, are going to be done online. I don't know if it's appropriate, but, you know, we're talking about the agreement. I think, you know, the systems that you have for tracking things and a status, and that the people who are builders and things can go through all that, I think that's, sounds like a good step forward.
Right. And I think out of the, about 46,000 permits that are issued in Pike's Peak Regional in the seven communities, and now eight, about 62% of them are issued online with no person touching them.
Yes, Carol.
Along those same lines, who maintains that website? Is that, did we decide that we would do that for?
Well, we're maintain, it's, what we did is we made Woodland Park part of our website.
Okay.
So it's an eighth community, so we're maintaining all of that. We have our own servers, our own programmers, our own, we have our own folks, network and hardware, software, those type of things.
The employee that we're going to provide on a, some part-time basis, is that an employee that we already have on staff?
Yes, we just hired Amy Wallen, who used to work in the planning department as our half-time permit technician.
But recall that her salary will come from the fees that are generated to the building department, so there will be a reimbursement from
So she will be a, still be a part-time employee? Will she be covered through our regular benefits package, then?
It will be commensurate with other part-time employees within the city, which means they don't get benefits except for their taxes and disability and things, some things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
She's our employee, but being paid for out of the Regional Building's pocket.
Okay.
Yes, Bob.
We had this discussion when we were talking about the budget, and you didn't indicate there was initial upfront cost for some of the IT support, but by and large, this would be revenue neutral. The fees which we charge would be paid by the people to buy, you know, get the building permits. Is that roughly correct? I mean
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, question. Are you a government entity, or are you a private or public company?
Let's make sure I get this one correct. We're a governmental enterprise. We are, we exist because of delegation of authority from all, well, including Woodland Park, all eight jurisdictions. I wanted to add one other thing. It's my intent with the Board of Appeals to assist with that as the attorney, to assist with Woodland Park like I do with Colorado Springs. And the reason for that is to keep expenses for Woodland Park down. And I'm not trying to step on Erin's toes or get involved in things that I don't need to be involved with, but that's part of my job. Yes, sir.
The document says that this appeals board will meet once a month, unless there's no business, I assume, but also if there's some emergency business, as we've talked about previously, and you need a quick answer, is there an opportunity, then, for a quick answer in this appeals process?
That's your decision. That belongs to Woodland Park, not to Regional Building.
Okay, so if a contractor says, hey, I need to have an answer, he can talk to Sally. Sally say, okay, we'll schedule a meeting next week, and, you know, and that's something you can accommodate, then.
Sally will work through that, as it occurs.
Yeah, I think one of the, another step we have to take is to set up that appeals process.
Yeah, right, okay.
If I could add, with regard to those type of issues, the first, first, you know, not the first, but the first answer would be, is there a way the code is structured that we can take care of that without an appeal? There are a couple of things in the code book that allow us to do modifications to the code, also to allow alternate materials and methods. So we're not, you know, we're not going to send someone to an appeal if we can solve the issue and find a way to solve the issue.
And keeping in mind, you know, this is the initial posting, so we will be having a public hearing.
And, you know, there are a lot of gray areas in those interpretations. Do you document those interpretations, so if the issue comes up again, this is how we handle it?
Absolutely. And, you know, as a quick, sometimes making things exactly per code, the solution is worse than the problem out there. You could have an example where the stairway is too wide, but still noncompliant with the code, so the solution would be to make the stairway smaller. Obviously, that's ridiculous. So that would be one where I would issue a modification and say, this is a safer condition, although not compliant with the code. So there's a number of things that come up, and we would look at those to try to eliminate or to avoid the slowdown of the project.
Mayor Turley, would you like for me to go through all three items, and then you can come back and vote on them, or would you like to vote on each one of these first?
So, why don't we do the ordinance 1198 for the initial posting, and then move on to the other items?
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance number 1198 on initial posting.
Sorry.
No?
No, we were talking about the intergovernmental agreement first.
We took a little bit of out of order because we thought it would flow better, but it seems like we've confused things. So let us back up
I'll draw that.
Let us back up, and I would recommend that we conclude the discussion on the intergovernmental agreement.
Yes.
Let's finish that. And then which had you intended to do next, Sally?
1198, the code.
Okay. Let's do the MOU, then we'll do the code, and then we'll come back to the fees.
Okay, so we're actually on item number 10C.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Can we move, though, to approve this?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, I move to approve the IGA between the City of Woodland Park and Pike's Peak Regional Building Department as presented.
Okay, now is it an MOU or is it an IGA?
IGA.
It's an intergovernmental agreement.
Okay. It's what you said.
Did I say MOU?
Yeah.
IGA.
We have a motion and a second to approve the IGA between City of Woodland Park, Pike's Peak Regional Department to provide building services. Any further discussion? Hearing done, we will take a vote on that, Cindy.
Thank you. Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Gervetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, Sally, got me. Where are we going next?
Thank you. Next, we are on item 8B, which is ordinance 1198. This is to adopt the Regional Building Code, which is a document that looks like this. And in this document, it adopts the international codes of 2009. So this is the building code, the residential code, and all the suites of codes that go along with the international code for plumbing, for mechanical, for energy, and so forth. I can bring out all those books. They're about this high. We do have those code books in our office for anyone to come and review. This is an adoption by reference, so as a result, we have to do two publications, which is why we're asking for this to be approved on initial posting and setting the public hearing for December 5th. This ordinance is structured in several parts. The first part is to repeal and reenact Title 15. Currently, Title 15 in the municipal code deals with the building construction. Section 2 is the establishment of the Board of Appeals, and that lays out a structure that you'll be seeing, there are rules and procedures that we hopefully, and make those appointments on December 5th. So that will be taken care of when this is the public hearing for this ordinance. We'll be making appointments to the Board of Appeals, and we're proposing that that board has five members with two alternates. It's very similar to our Board of Adjustment, which also hears variances and appeals. They have five members and two alternates. Moving on to section 3, that is the actual adoption of the Pike's Peak Building Code 2011 that I just showed you, and it includes exceptions, a very few exceptions to that code that are unique to Woodland Park. And I have been meeting with an advisory committee, of which Jim Olson is here this evening, and Mac McIver, who are two of about nine folks who have been meeting weekly to help me with coming up with the building codes and the few exceptions to the regional building codes. So those are outlined in there. In section 3, there's also an elaboration on how violations are handled, and Attorney Smith has worked on that section to ensure that it is appropriate. And then the last sections of this ordinance deal with reenacting those sections of Title 15 that we wanted to preserve, which include the fire code, the septic system and health regulations, the park development fees, the sizing of water tap provision, and travelers' directional signs. That's a quick summary of the adoption of the building code on first reading, and recommend that you set the public hearing for December 5th. What questions can we answer for you?
Any questions for Sally on this now?
No, there's one.
Yes, Gary.
Is there a reason why we can't combine the Board of Adjustments with Board of Appeals?
Yes. The Board of Adjustment purely hears appeals or variances from the zoning regulations. So this will only deal with building codes.
Typically, a Board of Appeals is made up of building professionals somehow involved in that process, so it's almost an appeal to your peers.
Have the, have you begun accepting applications for that board?
We have informally begun to accept them. We will formalize that soon so that they'll fill out the standard application form, and we'll advertise and get that rolling here soon.
Yes, Bob.
One slight correction for the record. It's Mac McVickers.
McVickers, sorry.
But you're, you are like McIver, so I can understand her.
That's kind of true. Any other questions for Sally? Then entertain a motion for ordinance number 1198 for initial posting for the public hearing set for December 5th.
Motion to approve and consider ordinance 1198, initial posting for a public, public hearing on December 5th.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Then Cindy, we will take a vote.
Thank you. Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Gervetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next.
Okay, and while you're here, we'll go ahead with the next item related.
This is Resolution 766, and Cindy Morse is going to help me by handing out Exhibit A to you, and we have been working hard to put together a schedule of fees that are --
I just don't want to hand this out yet. I don't want council to start studying it while you're talking.
Okay, thank you.
So let us know when you want them to really get it.
Okay, thank you.
Because I know how you are.
Okay.
You know us too well.
Okay. There was, I was, we have been working very hard to come up with a very fair and equitable approach to the building permit fees, and our first premise was to establish the, utilize the Teller County fee structure. After I put that together in a semblance, then Regional looked at it, starting on Monday, and have spent the week analyzing what is best for them and for the community. As a result, they have structured a set of fees which are actually less than Teller County's fees, and so because you have not had an opportunity to look at these, what we would like to do tonight is to just introduce this to you, and then reschedule it for November 21st, and that will give you an opportunity to be able to study the fees, ask questions, and we would propose that these fees would be enacted retroactively to November 4th, Monday of this week, so that we are starting to do some permitting. In fact, tomorrow, we should be able to issue our first yellow permit and collect our fees, and be able to have a few permits that will be pilots before we get to the November 21st date to adopt, officially adopt Resolution 766. So with that, I guess I would just ask you to take a look at the fees, and then if you have any questions, feel free to either schedule an appointment with me, or give me a call, and we can go through them. They are based on a table of values, and then there are certain modifiers that go with that. I think the other thing I would encourage you to do is to go online to the Regional's Building Department website, and you can pull down, drop down a fee calculator, and you can actually play a little bit with different sized buildings, different types buildings, and they've already programmed Woodland Park fees into that fee calculator online. So it is a very handy tool, especially for contractors and for homeowners, to be able to project or predict what they would be owing in terms of plan review and building department fees.
Yes, Bob. That sounds reasonable. But one of the issues we talked about before was transitioning where a building, a builder has already paid the fee for something, and now the building is going to be taken over by this new entity, and do they get a reimbursement for fees that they've paid for which will now have to be covered, or how is that going to work out? Would they have to pay double fees, then, or?
No.
Okay.
The fees that have already been paid to Teller County are it. I mean, that, those were prior to the November 4th enactment of these sets of fees. So that is what we were working under, and those permits have been issued, and those fees have been paid. For the ones that will be transferred, the open permits that will be transferred to the city, what Teller County will determine is how many more inspections are necessary to close out that permit. And typically, an inspection is $50. So if they have two inspections left to get their final or their CO, then they will transfer $100 of that permit fee to the city, and will transfer it to Regional.
Sounds good.
Eric.
So is this, are these the same fees as what's charged down in the spring?
No.
Or they're different?
Many of them are exactly the same. The single-family residential is exactly the same. The commercial are less than Teller, but more than El Paso County.
Okay.
And I think the only fair thing to say And I think the only fair thing to say is that we will look at that to see how we come out at the end of the year. I'm a little bit conservative, and I'm willing to back off of what Teller's fees are, but I, I have seven communities that are not going to want me to subsidize what I'm doing up here. So I'm a little bit conservative in that approach.
Now, the other seven communities, they're all charged at the same rate?
That's correct. And I think in the future, what, as we go down the road, some, you know, year, two years, or whatever, the conversation would be, does Woodland want to become part of that IGA as opposed to this IGA that's separate with Woodland?
Yes, Carol.
What is the requirement that mandates that the council vote on this fee schedule?
Because it's, Sally, can you answer that, please?
Somebody. Well, it is in the code that you're adopting tonight, or on December 5th, that the council set fees based on a resolution.
Council does that. And I, I think that's probably, you know, just speaking out loud, I mean, I think that's the reason it's in the code, is, you know, you want the elected officials making decisions on what these fees are, I think, versus a staff making...
I'm, I'm only concerned about those few pilot projects that are assuming this is the code's scale, or the fee scale that we'll use.
Here's what we're, how we're going to handle that. If, if you decide to not adopt what's been proposed to you, and if an applicant paid more than what the fee schedule says, we'll reimburse that difference. If you decide that a fee is too low, or, yeah, too low, and you decide to raise it, we won't charge that applicant that, that additional money. So it, we think that's the fairest way to do it, because we think these are pretty reasonable, and we think you'll not have any problems with them.
Yes, Ken.
I'm just curious, the other entities or other cities that you handle, what are the other seven?
It's unincorporated El Paso County, City of Colorado Springs, City of Fountain, Manito Springs, Green Mountain Falls, Palmer Lake, and Monument.
Great. Thank you.
Let's get John. Yes, John?
Ultimately, would there be any financial impact if we were part of the other seven as opposed to having our own IGA?
As far as cost?
Yeah, cost to us, or the permit fees themselves.
Seven communities would have to make that decision to, I mean, there's a fair amount of, there's buildings, there's a fair amount of assets. So the other seven communities would have to say, we're willing to have another full partner when they made the investment. Quite frankly, there's buildings, there's trucks, there's computers, there's systems, there's, I don't...
Does that have to be a unanimous decision on the part of the other seven?
Correct.
Yes, Eric.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. I'm all, I mean, I, I think the approach is fine, putting this off. I think between now and then, I, I don't know how I could ever discern whether these are good, bad, or indifferent, you know, unless we were to do some case studies, and, which I will probably do. But anyway, and I didn't realize until tonight that the fees are going to be less than what we were proposing, which I, is, I guess is a good thing. Like I said to Sally in the back, I said, it's just another reason to bill here in Woodland Park as it relates to Teller County. So anyway, I guess I wish the rest of the council good luck in trying to figure this out in the next two weeks.
We'll turn to you to help us get through it.
Is there, is there a reason why we'd have to do that? I mean, not vote on it tonight, if everybody feels comfortable with that? I, I don't know how I have more expertise than you do to figure out whether these fees are appropriate or not.
Well, we just historically don't want to provide you with surprise opportunities like that, where you have to vote on it. So if you, certainly if you wanted to do that. Okay. We, this, this work was actually just completed about 2:00 this afternoon, so we do need to give the public a chance to take a look at it. So let's stick with the original plan if you don't have an objection.
Is there any role for the, your local support group to weigh in on these fees, too? I mean, the contractors, are they, and the people that are building, are they going to have a comment on these fees?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, so if they have any problems, they can let us know on the 21st.
Yes.
Okay. Is that it for these? Yeah, Eric would like to make one general comment.
I just, I want to make a general comment. I mean, Sally, I know, and others, and I don't want to leave anybody out, and I guess I could wait it till next time, but I don't know whether you guys will be here or not. But, you know, has done an outstanding job, I know, pulling all of this together, as well as the other community members who have weighed in and helped out. You know, this is not something that's really a small endeavor, and I think we all know that. And especially with all of the things that are occurring here in Woodland Park. So I just want to say, thank you, especially with some of the things that I have going on, and some of my concerns. And it looks like everything's going to go very smoothly, and transition very smoothly. And I'm very excited, because I do a lot of work down in the Springs, and very excited to see Regional Building come up here, and appreciate the fact that you guys are willing to come up here and really step in and help us out when we, we're in a tough spot. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think there was someone in the audience who signed up to speak on this. It's not public hearing, but they did indicate they wanted to say something about the building department.
Yeah, Mike, this would be an appropriate time, if you'd want to come on up and speak now. Come on up, Mike McVicker, and state your name and address, and share with us what you want to tell us.
I'm Mac McVicker. I live at 715 Valley View Drive here in Woodland Park. And I want to just draw an analogy. How many of you here have ever seen or read the book Apollo 13? There's a scene in there where Chris Kraft, the Director of Mission Control, goes into a conference room, the spacecraft's in trouble. He takes a paper bag, throws it on the table. Three or four engineers are told, you've got two hours to come up with a solution to get that CO2 scrubber working, or all three of those guys die. So about two months ago, I'm sure it was Dave Butterby, they walked into Sally's office and said, guess what? You've got two months to put a building department together, or we shut down building in this town. Well, she did it. And I was, played a minor role, along with Jim, and Jeff, and some other people on the ad hoc committee. We met every Tuesday morning, she cracked the whip, 7:30. And we started out, she thought IBC was, was a type of root beer. Now she knows it's a building code. But I just want to say that Sally and her staff looked at all kinds of options. I don't know where they found enough hours in the day to put this together, and Eric already alluded to that. But being in, in the middle of it, and she, she was merciless. I mean, we have stuff to read, and things to, to look at, and I just want to, want to say, I'm really glad to be living in a town that has a public servant just dedicated to pull this off. And just, just thought it was great.
And Mike, I'm, I'm just going to add to that. I think it's great that you guys were willing to step up and work with Sally, and that we've been able to take, you know, something that's been a bit of a challenge over the past few years, and, and hopefully this is all actually going to end up being a much better deal for everybody. That's what we want, better for everyone. That's the goal. And I know that's what Sally's been working towards, and David's. So hopefully that's where we end up, in working with these guys and the company, and hopefully it'll be a win-win for everyone. Okay?
Thank you.
Counselman Schaefer, you had asked a question about the other communities. The other communities were asked, before we started this process, whether they were interested in, in us coming up here. And that was a unanimous decision by both our advisory board and our commission, that my three bosses, to, to try to do what we could to come up and partner with Woodland Park. So I, I didn't want to make it sound like, you know, it's not, I'm just saying, they, it's their decision, I don't want to speak for them, but they were 100% supportive of us talking with Sally and coming up here.
Great.
Happy to hear that.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. And Sally, don't leave. I think you're going to tell us what we're going to do with item 9A.
Yes. Item 9A is the Teller County Waste Conditional Use, Special Use Hearing. The client, or the applicant, Jay Baker, has requested to table this hearing that was scheduled for this evening to January 16th, 2014. And this is due to the Teller County filing a lawsuit challenging the annexation. So we would request that council move to table this item to January 16th, 2014.
I'd make a motion to table ordinance number 1196 to January 16th, 2014.
Have a motion and second. Any discussion? We'll take a vote.
Thank you. Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And we'll move on to item 10A on, on the new business, and that's to consider Resolution 764 concerning water restrictions. And for that, we'll turn to our Director of Utilities, Kip Wiley.
Thank you. Good evening. Resolution 764 is lowering the water level restriction from level two to level zero. We believe at this time of the year, it is a good decision. Water usage has dropped, showing winter water numbers, and also with current rain in our local well field, has risen. Groundwater levels have, have risen, therefore also creating no need for water restrictions at this time. I can answer any questions you may have, but staff does recommend approval of Resolution 764.
Any questions for Kip? Hearing then, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve our Resolution 764.
Second. Have a motion and second to approve Resolution Number 764. Any further discussion? Hearing then, we'll turn to Cindy for a vote.
Thank you. Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And we've already covered items 10B and C, and we'll move on to item 10D. We're going to review the, some budget items, and for that, I'm going to turn to our city manager, David Butterby, to walk us through that.
Thank you, Mayor. On October 17th, I presented to you the budget message and the vast majority of the funds. This evening, we're going to talk about the Downtown Development Authority Fund, the Debt Service Fund, and water, and wastewater. We'll follow the same procedure as we've done in the past by going to the detail pages, seeing if you have questions, take a look at the summary pages, and, and go from there. Of course, tonight, we're going to talk specifically about those four general areas, but at the end, if you have other comments or questions about any component of the budget, we'll certainly do our best to answer those. So initially, we're going to talk to the Downtown Development Authority Fund. I'm going to ask Brian to come to the podium and to answer questions that you may have. But for beginners, let's start on page 25, if we could, please. Page 25 is the Downtown Development Authority revenue sheet. And of course, you know that the DDA derives its revenue primarily from the TIF property tax, and so we are fed that information from the Teller County Assessor. We received the draft information in August, with the final numbers coming in December. They rarely change more than a tenth of a percent. So these are pretty solid numbers. Do you have any questions about the DDA revenues? Then let's flip the page and take a look at DDA expenditures. The vast majority of these are identical, or very close to the things that you've seen in years past. Do you have any questions as it relates to the DDA O and M expenditures? Excellent. Then I'm going to ask you to flip back to the DDA summary, which is on page R, behind the budget message, page Rs. and Romeo. And I'll answer any questions that you may have as it relates to the summary of the DDA operational budget.
Be straightforward.
Well, my question is, are the prospects of getting any of our money back?
For the city? Well, as you recall, we had a, during this year, we set a, a new timeframe for the, for the debt, the million dollar note, for three years, essentially interest-free, but with a payment, a principal payment structure, that would be due in the 36-month. And in, quite frankly, it is, it is a top priority of the DDA, and I want to state that for the record, to pay this million dollars back. And in our, in our discussions, I think the real path to that is selling real estate within the DDA holdings, and that's, we're working through. In fact, we have a subcommittee meeting here where we're talking about just the programming. 2014 is going to be an active year, and we're very hopeful that we see some timeframe relative to that three-year period. And we have, we have an aggressive schedule, so, but I, I want to state it very clear for the record, that it is the DDA's priority to pay that, that debt back to the city.
And it was actually agreed that you would be making a payment at a certain time, right?
Yeah, the, the way this, the, the agreement is, actually, I think it was $36,000 over the, the period of three years. The, the actual wording in that agreement says you can make that $36,000 in the 36-month. I think the DDA would like to make a good faith payment in 2014, and we have every intention, hoping that, you know, our revenue stream is robust, and, and we can make that good faith payment in 2014.
But there is no commitment at this point.
That's correct.
To do that.
But there is a commitment for the future, though, right?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, that's that balloon payment. But I just don't want you to misinterpret what's being said, is, there is no plan to pay anything back based on current revenue streams. That's why Brian is so adamant about selling some real estate. If that happens, then, then the chances of that payment happening are much, much better. And that's what he's pursuing.
Yes, yes, Bob.
Yeah, because I didn't see it as an illicit expenditure to pay us back. But the, the 2014 unrestricted fund balance, when we see some big number in the negative, it tends to raise, well, at least to me, it raises questions. So, because the unrestricted fund balance back then to 2012 was $2,843 in the positive. So can you, you know, it was probably in the numbers before, in the section 215, but can you give a little more background as to how we end up at 997, 363?
Sure. The, if, if you just look through the, the summary, and it really relates to the expenditures, 2013 expenditures, and a lot of the weight of that is carried forward with the CSI project as we move forward through that, realizing we have this balance, and, and I call it the weight of what was on my desk when I, when I took this position, but it was an, we knew intended moving forward that we had this fund balance moving forward, and, and that's how it gets accounted for in the, in the overall summary. And, but I think when you look at the overall expenditures and go back to the column, I think you can see 2013 year-end projection, and that the big number is the Woodland Station improvements, and that's really where it comes out. And, but the understanding is that we go through that, and then as we move forward with the, the debt structure, we pay that off.
But one point of clarification, most years, the DDA fund balance is very close to that negative $1 million, because the $1 million loan from the city pays that. The reason it's a positive number, unrestricted fund balance per audit 123112, was the sale of the land. So there was a large revenue stream towards the end of 2012 that was then spent in 2013 that took it back close to that negative million. So there's, if you go back into previous budgets, almost all year-end unrestricted fund balances are near that $1 million loan.
Right. So the minus 997 is basically within that million.
It is.
Yeah. So it has to come from somewhere, and it came from...
That's correct. And that's what that line says, negative fund balance is funded by the $1 million loan from the general fund.
Okay. I just don't read everything.
We don't, we clearly don't want to go over the million in an audited scenario. That's clearly our objective.
Any other questions on this? Continue, go ahead, David.
Okay. Thank you. Then the, we'll go to the, the DDA Debt Service Fund, which you'll find on page 27. And Kelly just is recovering from surgery, so she's moving slowly to the podium. But as with all debt service funds, it's an in-and-out account. You know, we, the, the revenue stream...
You know, the revenue stream matches the expense.
Correct. We spoke of debt service funds last time we were together. The revenues actually accumulate funds from the funding source or the other funds that provide the resources to pay the debt service, which is the 215 fund. We use a portion of those TIF revenues to pay the vector note because vector note comes first, and we must pay that first. So we accumulate the revenues periodically through the year from the 215 fund, and then we pay those principal and interest payments, as you see on page 28, which are scheduled for the year. They net to zero at the beginning and at the end of the year.
Any questions on those? Well, then we'll zip right along to the 510 Water Enterprise Fund. If you'll go to page 37, we'll begin our review there. Thank you, Kelly. And if you have really hard questions, Kip's going to answer them. But let's take a look at page 37 and see if you have any questions as it relates to the Water Enterprise Fund revenue stream. Then let's go to page 38, Water Administration Expenses. And then page 39, Water Enterprise Fund, Water Treatment Operations.
Maybe just a question, not specific on this, but, or for Kip. When is it that we get to a point in the Water Enterprise Fund that we can kind of start looking at additional water storage and those things? Where would that kind of start flowing into the future?
No pun intended, I'm sure. Actually, discussions are ongoing with Colorado Springs Utilities and two property owners. The Colorado Springs Utilities discussion is whether we could tap into their 60-inch line or to draw water from or put water into, and that would be kind of on the south side of town, and discussions still continue with the Boy Scouts for up Lloyd Gold's Road. So, Mayor, I'm not answering your question directly because I don't have a timeline, but discussions are always ongoing as it relates to that.
And that's exactly what I wanted to hear, just for the public to know that those discussions are going on.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. But taking a look at revenues versus expenses, you've got total revenues of 1.644, and expenses of 2,001,000. So I would think that so long as you're running in a negative, how long can you run in that negative without increasing our water sewer fees? And is this just a peak, or is this the long-term plan, so this is?
We typically run in the negative because of our large debt service. Every year, we seem to end up in a positive situation. Since 2010, our fund balance has increased every year. The reason for 2014 projections is, for revenue, it's small. We've only anticipated five taps because we don't count large capital taps revenues because they are unpredictable.
But the other unpredictable thing is when we put a level-two water restriction, and everybody starts using a lot less water, your revenues, fees are going to go down. Has that had a significant impact in 2013 revenues?
Yes, sir. If you look, it's about 160,000 short compared to 2012.
So that's that fine balance between conservation of a resource and a revenue stream.
As much as I want to save water, it costs money.
Yeah. So we, but we, right now, we err on the side of saving the resource.
I have utmost confidence in the Utility Advisory Board, or whatever they're called, so that they'll keep this under control.
They watch it closely.
So let's take a look now at page 40, which is the Water Capital Fund. Thank you. Let's take a look at 41, Water Rights. It's fairly simple.
And I'll just add, you know, for the public who might be, you know, watching or listening, these figures, you know, we've had for a month now, and opportunities for us to review them and ask questions and things in advance, and then, you know, any final questions that we might have tonight. So, just so everybody has a perspective on that.
And page 42 is the water side of the Field Services Group. Field Services is made up of both water and wastewater funding. And lastly, page 43, the Water Customer Services. And let's take a flip back then to the 510 account summary, which is on page Y, as in Yankee. Bob's already alluded to some of the components associated with that, but that's the summary. If there are no questions on that, then we'll head back into the detail sheets for the Wastewater Enterprise Fund, starting on page 44, which is the revenue stream for wastewater. Any questions on that page? Page 45 is now the beginning of the expenses with wastewater administration. And 46, wastewater treatment operations, the plant out on Highway 67.
Love that electric bill. I mean, just for the public, you know, it takes a lot of electricity to operate utilities.
Then page 47, wastewater capital. And page 48 is the wastewater component of Field Services. And lastly, on page 49, the wastewater component of Customer Services. Yes, sir.
That gas, is that to heat the plant up or what? The gas utility bill. Is it, what is it, hot water system?
It's a boiler system, yeah.
If there's no other questions on the detail sheets, I'd ask you to flip the page Z as in zebra for the summary for the Wastewater Enterprise Fund.
And again, just kind of looking at the future, when are we looking at continuing expansion of wastewater treatment plant?
As soon as possible. We just paid off the loans, the debt service this year. We like to save as much as we can to go into new improvements, but the loading on the plant will control the amount of time we have.
Right. But that's something we will be doing here in the...
We have, we have in the budget 60,000 for engineering and studies for this year.
To begin that process.
Right.
Yes, sir.
But this is all assuming that our fees are not going to change. I mean, my water bill will basically stay?
Your water bill and wastewater bill actually go up every year based on the CPIU.
Okay. Inflation, yeah.
Right.
Kip, what about water meter upgrade? Is that going to occur, or are we looking at that?
The water meters, we look, we're looking at that right now. That is one of the goals of the Utilities Advisory Committee, to get that looked at and implemented. It is on the list, however, when it would be done, I don't know. It's, we've had two companies give us kind of an assessment of where we're at, and we're in the phase to where we could start pulling meters to see how inaccurate they are, and if this is a viable option going forward. Also, with the meter replacement, is the augmentation reservoir, those kind of, or side-by-side, they're both...
Priority.
Right. And they're both very expensive.
Oh, yes, Bob. I'm sorry.
Well, when I was with the government running bases and things like that, we would measure the input to the water system and then what we build in the water system, and you could determine how much leakage you had in the pipes, okay? And we had some massive percentages of leakages. How, is that an issue in this city? It is, if so, is there anything we're addressing about replacing existing leaking lines and that sort of thing, too?
We replace them as we find them, obviously. Part of the assessment for the meters, they look at total water used and billed, and there are some variables in there as far as, you know, fire hydrant flushing, mainline flushing, stuff that isn't metered. And the percentage of loss is anywhere from 10% to 15%.
That's pretty good. Question.
I just had a question about the, I think I saw on the news last night or the night before in Fountain, where apparently they've done a lot of the smart metering, and I was surprised to hear there was a fair amount of opposition, although the measure didn't succeed. But I was surprised. Sometime, and I don't think tonight's the time, I would like to understand more about what could possibly be the detriment to that.
Our barber utilities technician has actually done some research into that because we were curious as well. Those were electric smart meters, not water meters, but the technology is the same, but we could get you some information on that.
Okay. Thanks.
That wastewater treatment expansion program, you allotted about $60,000 for engineering studies on that? I don't know, I know there's a couple of ideas on expansion with that, expanding the facility, but is that enough money to do engineering studies, to do an expansion on that facility for 2014?
Is it enough to do it all? No. We're trying to save some money to go forward with the right process and technology. In 2022, new nutrient monitoring regulations come into place, so we need to also incorporate that with new study engineering. So there's a couple of things that play into factor besides just the loading. And that 60,000 is kind of just to keep the ball rolling and figuring out what we need to do, but not necessarily finalize the exact plan.
Just a thought, maybe one of the things we want to do is have the, you know, we have a UAC meeting coming up next week, and maybe we can talk about some kind of an update from the UAC to the council, you know, kind of updating some of these future things, just to bring it fresh in everyone's mind.
60,000 is just for 2014, correct?
Right. Yes, sir.
Any other questions for, about utilities?
David, I just want to bring something very positive to the attention of the council, that within the next two years, starting next year and the following year, most all of the debt, except for our loans with the Water Resources Authority, will mature and be paid off, including the large water share purchase we made with the Bauer Brothers several years back, and that will pay off next year.
2015.
Yes. The next budget that you will be considering. So that's a huge amount of cash flow that I think that will make a big difference in our, in our fund balance and those two funds. So, thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. I was remiss when we were discussing the DDA budget. The DDA Board did review the budget, so just know that they have reviewed this, and they have, they approve it to bring it to council in this form. So just kind of in summary, this evening, we finished the discussion about the major funds. Next meeting, we will bring to you the updated budget. Recall that there were several changes that we've made through the course of the last few meetings. We did not update those intentionally. We want to do it just one more time, so we will update that document for you and present the entire budget to you at the first reading on November 21st. And also, we'll be bringing to you the resolution certifying the mill levy. That's the normal process that we go through. Then recall, we'll have our public hearing on the budget on December 5th, and if we are able to complete the budget discussions by December 5th, then historically, what we've done is we've taken the second meeting off, second meeting in December off, because it's so close to the Christmas holidays. So what other questions might we answer for you about the entire budget or the process?
And everybody, please bear with me a little bit, because this last month, I haven't been able to keep up with things as much as I would like. Will we, the reserve that we have in the discussions, I know there was, there was a work session back on, I think, October the 14th.
Right.
And then the discussions at the last council meeting, kind of where are we on how we're going to put to use some of those extra reserve monies beyond that which we feel we need to retain as reserve, and kind of what the priorities are? I mean, I think it's been discussed, and, you know, maybe we could just review that a little bit for me.
Absolutely. Absolutely. My notes from the October meeting reflect that the council agreed that a 10% reserve, understanding the definition of that, was an adequate number. So knowing that, then we were able to back into a number that could be available for opportunities. Recall that within the budget, as it was presented to you, we did include the second school resource officer. We also included the design of the fleet maintenance facility. What we didn't include was any monies as it related to the design for Memorial Park, nor did we have the $10,000 in for the Main Street program. Those will be included in the budget. So the residual, I think the number that we started with was 699, and then you take out the 130, and that took us to 569. When I ran all the numbers again with that, it was more like 540, 550. But it's that pot of money that the council said, just hold on to it. Just don't earmark it for anything. We talked about creating not a fund, if you will, but just an annotation that said this money was going to be set aside in a reserve for some future use. I presented several different distributions of percentages, and my recollection was, we said, let's not worry about that distribution based on percentages. We were just going to hold on to that money for council's discussion and distribution at some later date.
Okay. So in the future, we'll have a discussion as a council on, for example, where we want to go with the next step for Memorial Park?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that, did I generally capture that?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I do have some corrections to make on page K, which is...
Let's get there, please.
Yeah. Which is the budget summary. You have a transpositional problem on the 2013 projected expenditures, about the fourth number down, $7,62,844. It's actually $7,26,937, but you can, you can check on that. But, yeah, I mean, if you have all this on an Excel spreadsheet, you know, it all should generate the right numbers. So I would hope to see that correction in this revised budget you come out with.
Thank you.
And that, of course, has a role on effect to the other, other parts. But also, you have some things that are, should be like in the 410 account, but you have them shown on the general fund, but then you have revenue transfers, and that gets a little complicated. Why didn't you just show it in the 410 account as opposed to in the general fund plus with the transfers? Is there a reason why you do it that way?
Yes. And Kelly's going to tell us why. Now, it has, please do, Kelly, I'm serious, but it has more to do with the audit process, but I'm going to let Kelly describe why we do it that way.
We're talking about the transfers from the 410 fund to other funds.
Right.
Well, by, by vote of the people, we're required to account for the revenue of the one cent sales tax in the 410 fund for use on specific projects. one cent sales tax in the 410 fund for use on specific projects as defined by the question, streets and related items. And therefore, the revenue must come into that fund in accordance with that question and what we are supposed to do. Then we use that revenue for direct expenditures there, or to help subsidize other expenditures that are grant funded, for instance. And the grant project may have a component that qualifies for some street revenue use. And so we move some of the money from the 410 fund where we collected it, and put it where the bulk of the expenditures are occurring for that specific asset. Assets can't be cut in parts and accounted for in different funds. The asset needs to be in a fund whole, and so we fund the purchase of that asset from other places, the 510 fund, et cetera. And so I hope that answers your question. We use a transfer in order to accomplish that, to put the money where it needs to be after we account for it properly.
Okay.
Does that help?
Well, it gets a little complicated, but accounting does.
It does. It's my job to secure it.
But one of the things, before you come out with the final one, at the end of the last meeting, you handed out the revised sheets, and so there was, there's quite a few changes on that. And for instance, City Hall Park and Ride Matching Fund, it went from...
Could you tell me which page you're on, please? I'll get there.
Oh, okay.
Down to the bottom.
It would be under, under the general fund, under capital.
With page eight?
Yes.
Page eight.
The park and ride was at $60,000 some odd thousand, and the one above it for the Fountain Creek, no, that was the traffic study. The City Hall Park and Ride was $80,000 something thousand. It changed to $168,000.
Yeah.
If you will reference page 21 of the 210 fund, I had picked up the grantor's share of the grant in lieu of the city's match in error before, and so that has been corrected to reflect the correct amount that the city must match.
Okay.
My error, my apologies.
And then the, it was nice to see the traffic planning transportation study go from 65 down to 14.5.
Same error on my part, sir.
Okay. Then we added in $36,000 for the Lions Park sidewalks. Now, under the 410 account, we've always listed sidewalks as part of, as part of the 410.
Not all sidewalks. This is, this one's a little bit unique. This is a sidewalk system that's within a park, so we didn't, it just didn't seem to me to be part of a transportation corridor.
A street.
It wasn't part of a street right of way, so I felt that this didn't need to be a 410 expenditure for that sidewalk.
Okay. And then the design of the fleet maintenance facility, you had $110,000. You still haven't shown the percent.
You're right.
That would be applied to, you know, the 38%, I think.
It's the percent that was in the work session that we had for the final cost. That's one of the changes that we will make in the final document.
Right.
I didn't want to inundate you with iterations, and so I wanted to have the discussion tonight, and with, based on your guidance tonight, we'll make the final document to get to you.
And then you've also added in the renovation of the City Hall, which is, which is fine. And then there's, you added $170,000 in for the right turn lane to Trail Ridge. That is a road project. Why isn't it showing up in the 410 account?
Yeah. Historically, and probably erroneously, when transportation capital fees were collected, they were put into the general fund. I'm trying to wean ourselves off of that. I think that was an incorrect practice, and so the residual of a lot of the transportation capital fees have been stored in the general fund. We, as we collect those, as we've been collecting them in 2013, they've been going into 410 where they reside. So we're utilizing the money appropriately, but it's coming out of the general fund, because that's where it's been stored.
Okay. So when I, when I go through the list of what I've just read, and said what was 410 eligible, like sidewalks, or the turning lanes, or whatever, I come up with $430,000 of that as being eligible, although you've just transferred $335,000 from the 410 account to the general fund. So you really, in the final version that you put out, you know, before the next meeting, you know, it should show the amount of revenue that should be transferred from the 410 account to general fund to pay for, for this $170,000 for the turn lane?
No. The, the $170,000 was a general, it came from the general fund. It resided there. That's where it was collected over the years. So even though it's a road project, I won't argue that point with you, but the intent of the transportation capital fees was to augment projects just like this. And for, since its inception, when we collected those fees, they went into the general fund. They should have been going into the 410 fund.
So you're not talking about the 1% sales tax for the street capital fund?
No.
You're talking about a transportation capital fee?
Capital fee, yes.
Okay, it's separate from that.
It is. But in my opinion, the, what we collect for the transportation capital fees, is it should, it'll show up as a revenue stream within the 410 fund, as will the 1 cent sales tax. And so to me, that's just the logical place for it to be housed.
Okay. And can you show me on what page the transportation capital fund shows up?
Sure. If you go to the general fund revenue on page one, or perhaps page two.
Page two. They are not here. Well, they should be. Just a moment.
They, they might not be, because we...
We moved them.
Yep. Because we, because we moved them?
It gets really confusing.
No, well, it is, but that's why we have these discussions. If you go to page 35.
It's 35.
That's the street capital improvement fund revenue stream, and so the very first line is transportation capital fees.
Bob, prior to 2013, if you look in your 2012 budget, you will find transportation capital fees with the last four numbers, 3, 4, 6, 8, in your general fund revenues. And from 1994, 1999 to 2012, we have accumulated those transportation capital fees in that line in the general fund. David and I have accounted for those and offset expenditures that qualified, that were made in the general fund, and we still have a small balance left. We're using $170,000 of that for this project this year, and then we'll have a small residual left to zero out those transportation capital fees for appropriate projects.
Okay.
In the general fund. And going forward, 2013 forward, they're accounted for in the 410 fund, where they should be and will be used for appropriate projects.
Okay, let me confirm what I just heard. I'd like to repeat, that although you're only raising like four, less than $5,000 a year towards that account, you've built up that account somewhere else. It's not reflected in here what the balance of that account is, but you're saying that it does have at least $170,000 this, this turning lane can go towards?
Yes.
And then that account would then basically zero out. There's nothing left.
In prior years, between 99 and 2012, there were many years where it was in the hundreds of thousands of dollars that those fees were collected, when development was more active. And so we have accumulated those. I think David has the accounting in front of him.
Kelly's correct. It wasn't hundreds of thousands in any given year. It might have been around $100,000.
Right.
But certainly...
Thank you, David.
We don't, we don't count on that revenue stream. It's, we don't count our chickens before they hatch, so we don't look into the future unless we're really certain something's going to happen. So that's why you see such a low number for what's projected, or what we've budgeted. But we have a good accounting of the residual and how much has been put in over the years.
But if you're going to spend $170,000 out of it?
Right.
Wouldn't it show as an expense against the board?
No, because remember, we've collected the transportation capital fees, and they went into the general fund.
Right.
We have corrected that this year moving forward, and that's why in the 410 fund revenue stream, you see the line that says transportation capital fees. Right now, the residual resides in the general fund fund balance, and that residual has been worked down. Over the years, we've spent it on appropriate projects, and we've worked that balance down. So you won't see that expense in the, in the 116 general fund. You may see some this year, and you may see some next year, but then it should all come out of the 410 fund.
Is it possible to leave a footnote in there, so that people know where, where the money is?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Okay. I'd like to make a comment, and I know Ken, having been on council before, I'd like to thank Kelly, and, you know, in putting these together, these are not simple documents, as you can tell from us all going through it and trying to balance and understand all the different funds. But I think the budget as presented to council over the last few years has really got, you know, we don't want to get the noise level too much, but it's got a granularity that I think personally is very good for council, and explains things pretty well, so that we can ask the questions that we need and have an understanding as best we can. So I thank you.
Well, it's really all of staff, but I appreciate that, and I'll speak for them in saying thank you for that.
Yes, Bob.
One of the improvements we had this year in the goals and objectives was, in fact, a forecast over the next five to 10 years. And I think that will help our, our group. For instance, when we talked about the reserve, whether it comes out of the 699 or out of the budget itself.
Right.
It has the same net effect. I mean, if your, your revenues is $3 million, and you're spending $3.5 million, that half million is coming from somewhere. And so I think you can see the, the net effect in the following year, and then on the following year of these, these projections. So if, if we could have, you know, like, a, 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 a part of that is the, the forecast for out years, so that when we talk about how are we going to spend this on restricted reserve, you can plug in a number and, you know, see what exactly happens, or put it in the budget part, or, you know, using excess revenues or whatever. It simplifies it. It makes it easier for us to understand how this money flows through the system.
Okay, appreciate it. We can do that.
Okay. Any other comments on the budget? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 11. Mac already came up and spoke. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to council tonight? Give you the opportunity. Hearing none, we'll move on to reports. Mayor's report, I think I said most of what I wanted before. I will go over some upcoming events. It continues to amaze me, the wonderful number of things that go on in Woodland Park on a routine basis. On Saturday, this coming Saturday, November the 9th, is the Winter Farmers Market at the U-Pass Cultural Center, and that's from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Saturday, also Saturday, November the 9th, and Sunday, November the 10th, is the 9th Annual Teller County Regional Animal Shelter, T-CRAS, Mountain Holiday Arts and Crafts Fair. That's at Woodland Park High School, Saturday, 9:00 to 5:00, and Sunday, 10:00 to 3:00. Monday is Veterans Day, that's November the 11th. The American Legion VFW are hosting a free dinner for all veterans and their families, and this year, it's going to be at the U-Pass Cultural Center from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. The actual ceremony will begin at 6:00 PM, and we're looking forward to that. My American Legion post is really the one that's doing most of the organizing for that. And we do invite others to come and join us also. But it is free for veterans and their families, and active duty military, and we will just ask for a donation for others who come, and no set them out. And I will go ahead and add to that, RE2 School District is having a special Veterans Day Assembly at the high school gymnasium from 9:30 to 10:45 on Monday morning. This is kind of building upon something that was done at Columbine Elementary last year, and it's actually, it's the whole RE2 School District. So that's going to be a very special event. That's at 9:30 at the high school gym on Monday morning. Tuesday, November the 12th, Pike Peak Area Council of Governance is hosting an open house at the Cultural Center to discuss the regional non-motorized plan. That's at 6:00 to 8:00 PM on next Tuesday. Thursday, November the 14th, the Chamber is hosting a business expo at the U-Pass Cultural Center, and that's from 5:00 to 7:00, showcasing local businesses. And that's always a good time to, it's amazing, some of the businesses that exist around here that you don't know until you go and attend this. So that's always a good time. And that's next Thursday. Friday, November the 15th, is the Third Friday Art Walk downtown Woodland Park from 4:00 to 7:00. Saturday, November the 16th, is Celebrate the Library's 10th Birthday, and that's from noon to 3:00 PM at the Woodland Park Library. Counsel, reports? Ken?
I do have something on my new committee that I was placed on, Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee. Just like to remind the public that the Keep America Beautiful Program, there is a division here, so to speak, Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, where you can donate a junk car, a wrecked car, if you want to get them out of some, your yard or somebody else's. Be careful about that, of course. But you can get, of course, a donation credit, and also help the community. And if you do that, you need to specifically say that it's for the local KAB affiliate. It's not just Keep America Beautiful. That way, we get the credit locally. So if you need to know more about that, Lisa Parnell is our head person with the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful. She can help you with a lot of the details and the websites, if you'd like to get involved in that. The only other thing is a reminder, and I didn't realize this, recycle program, the middle school has that through the week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 8:00 to 10:00. Besides, about once a quarter, they do a big one during, on a Saturday. But they do have it through the week. And the other thing I found out that I'm very pleased to hear is they do have the ability to recycle batteries and CFLs. So that's very nice. A good, safe way to get rid of those.
And that's for electronics?
Yes.
And tell me, tell us again the times and dates?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, from 8:00 to 10:00.
Okay.
I know it's, you know, it's during the workday, but they do have the Saturday, you can watch for that. I think it's once a quarter.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay. Nothing. Okay, then I'll turn to Aaron.
Mayor and counsel, I did want to let you know that this week, the city was served by Teller County with a lawsuit challenging the Southwest Valley annexations. And I would request a motion that, giving the city attorney direction to defend that lawsuit.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second, directing our city attorney to defend the lawsuit filed by Teller County challenging the Southwest Valley annexation. And any, any discussion? Then we will take a vote, Cindy.
Thank you. Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Rovetto?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Anything else, Aaron?
I have nothing else.
Okay, David?
One scheduled, and then one impromptu. Brian, your update, please?
I'm hobbling slightly, mayor, but I'm glad that you're back, because my injury is no worse, no worse than what you went through. So good to have you back.
Thanks, Brian.
Mayor and counsel, just a quick update relative to Woodland Station update. As you'll notice, hopefully, we've gotten all the paving done before the, any more winter weather relative to the schedule for this year. We've got striping down. You'll see some street poles going, or the street lighting go up relative to the program that we have for this year on Center and Saddle Club, also along Park Street. Some landscaping, but most of the landscaping will defer to spring of next year, for obvious reasons. But we're wrapping it up. We've got some punch list items that we'll have. Moving into Woodland Hardware, they're aggressively looking for COs towards the end of the year, again, with an opening date of mid-February. So we're, I have been giving tours of the site. If anybody's interested, we can put on the hard hat and the orange vest and kind of give you a tour of what's going on with Woodland Station, if you have an interest. It'll be interesting as it continues on, particularly in the next 60 days. As you've noticed, obviously, the AmeriGas tank is gone, and we've recently gone through some design consideration with the DDA board. I'm hoping that sometime, either the next council meeting, or perhaps in December, NES, our design consultant for Woodland Station, will be able to make a presentation to council to kind of give you an update of what our projections are and what our work program will look like relative to 2014. As I mentioned earlier, it's going to be a very aggressive year in terms of development, construction, hopefully real estate, sales, et cetera. The, and again, with that particular program, it's really the idea of allowing us to know within Woodland know within Woodland Station what we can market. The one thing, the question came up about how we pay off the one million dollar note, it really is tied to the real estate, but I will tell you, because of the activity, the real estate values go up. It's not like the deal necessarily, and I hear this, and I know you hear it, for, for Woodland Hardware, et cetera, the more we do, the more valuable that real estate becomes. And so we, in our projections, and we'll share that with council as we work through our, our year-end projections, which I'll make a presentation in December on. So the news is good relative to the overall financials, relative to the DDA, and so again, we look forward to 2014. Trail Ridge Apartments is one, we had a nice article in the paper, if you saw the Courier here in the last day, with the, our chairman Dale Schnickter and myself, we're sponsoring the groundbreaking for the, for the apartments on November thirteenth, ten-thirty AM, the public is welcome. Again, it's a, it's a good foot forward positive for DDA in terms of what we're able to do, what we're able to leverage, and again, that story that we keep telling about the DDA success and where we're going in the next several years. Also, we're working on the DDA draft TIF agreement for Tractor Supply, which we'll review this month and then hope for approval in December, our December meeting with DDA. And then September fifth, Stephanie Trauer from Department of Local Affairs will be making a presentation to council on the Main Street program.
When?
December fifth.
December.
And again, there were some requests, I think, on behalf of council to get a little bit more information on the Main Street program, what we hope to accomplish, and it really does fit in, and it'll become rather obvious how it fits in not only with Woodland Station but DDA and many of the objectives we have within that Main Street boundary. Finally, the holiday promotional advertising plan, just wanted to give you an update of where we're at with that. On your desktop, you have the postcards and the Lighter Side of Christmas brochure, which I, we think was an excellent brochure that the city supported financially.
Brian, let me interrupt. So how wide of a mailing distribution did that go to?
The postcards?
Actually, the, the larger, this one.
That one I, I thought was five thousand, I think it's all the Woodland Park PO boxes.
Yeah, and I mean, that's pretty slick.
Yep.
And I saw that, and, and, I mean, I, I really liked it and, and thought it was a great way you could go through and pick things out that you wanted to attend, and so, kudos.
Yeah, they did a great job on that. We were very pleased.
This one, however, was in the RSVP packet. Some of you may have received that, so it received a wider distribution to include a, a lot of Colorado Springs.
I can tell you, fifty thousand postcards to Colorado Springs, Monument, Palmer Lake, Manitou Springs, Woodland Park, and El Paso County.
Cool.
So that gets a wide distribution, obviously. The postcard will also be distributed at Christmas tree cutting locations as well as other Woodland Park locations. I, I know we've had some requests already that we'll get, and if you have any special interest on location, we'll get you those postcards. We do place them throughout the, the city. Down the Springs, and I, one good example is Red Rocks Park, greener corners, sidewalk billboards. On the recycling bins, we have downtown Colorado Springs, and it's a, basically, an advertisement for come up to Woodland Park. I've seen a lot of those just happening, cruising through Colorado Springs, and we get a lot of feedback on those, so that's been a positive advertising marketing campaign. KOAA Channel Five TV commercial and online, generic commercial plus online promotion of Woodland Park holiday season events. If you watch late night TV, you're going to catch those Woodland Park commercials. One, if you have Comcast, Happy Holidays from Woodland Park Promotion by David Butterby and the mayor pro tem, Eric Smith, commercial will be posted to the city Facebook page. We've had a lot of comments on that, so you got your fifteen seconds of fame.
I think the mayor owes me one.
The, and I, again, I've got a lot of positive feedback. KRCC Radio Holiday Events Promotions, and then again, the Lighter Side of Christmas brochure that we've supported this year at, at the request of the, of the parade committee. And again, I think it'll, it'll pay big dividends as we move into the holiday season. Is there any questions I can answer?
I would just add that for the Lighter Side of Christmas Parade, last year, the mayor rode his motorcycle. The mayor will not be riding a motorcycle this year. However, the mayor will probably have his new Jeep with lights all over it, but he will be in four wheels and not two.
He could do like chips and put you on a trailer.
Well, they do have three-wheeler motorcycles.
We're okay. We've got it, we've got it under control.
Any other questions for Brian?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel.
I might mention that one of the fun things about the, the Christmas parade this year is we're, we're very close to finalizing being able to use our stored stockpile of fireworks from the last three years.
Wow.
From the Fourth of July and the Fifth of July. We've, we've been told by the fireworks company that they're tired of storing them, that, and they've done that for three years for free, and so we're working with the fire district, we're working with the parade committee, we're working with the pyro, pyrotechnic company, and so we think we're going to be able to do fireworks as Santa is making his way down Highway twenty-four, so it'll be very exciting. But that's not my impromptu comment. My impromptu comment is on last Sunday evening and early Monday morning, I had the privilege to represent Woodland Park as the USA Pro Challenge 2014 announced that the city of Woodland Park would be a host city for the Stage Five start for the 2014 Pro Challenge. It, it was very exciting. We were a sprint in twenty-four, twenty-twelve where we had about fifty-five hundred people watch the racers go past, about thirty seconds of excitement. This year, in 2014, it'll be a bit different. Mike Perini is going to be chairing the committee. He and I co-chaired the committees a year and a half ago. He'll be chairing the committee. Brian will be the staff point of contact. Lots of activity, lots of opportunity. We want to get the word out to the community now. Friday, August twenty-second, we will have world-class athletes gathering in our community, signing autographs, visiting with the community, and then racing off into the sunset. So it'll be a very exciting time, and again, it was a privilege to represent you and the community at that announcement. Thank you. That's all we have this evening.
Yes, Ken, one last?
One thing I forgot in effort to keep the town looking beautiful for that event. Just because the bears have probably gone to sleep doesn't mean your trice is free to be thrown out at any time. Crows and the ravens can tear those bags apart really quick, so a little side note, the white bags for the kitchen, the lightweight ones, they can shred. The heavier, black ones are a little heavier and they will last better, but at the very least, keep them in a container so those birds can't get to them, and we won't have all that litter everywhere. Thank you.
Good point. Just one thing. Yes, this may have to do with Sally. I don't know if Sally wants to present it. Did you want to say anything about Larry Black's DVD that just came out about U-Pass Historical Society? I don't know. Wanted to mention anything about it, but it is available, it is available for sale.
Yeah, please, Alan.
U-Pass Historical Society published a VCR video in ninety-nine that Claude Wiatrowski put together about the Shadow of Pike's Peak, which is the history, and now Larry Black has converted that to a DVD, and those are for sale at the Historical Society for twelve dollars each. So they're, they're a great, great Christmas gift.
Hearing nothing else? Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.